We will go back. Alright, are we done? I don't see the shape of the room. I'm not sure if it's easy. They must give us a few years.
Aroka.
DC, Addesina, the family in one million dollars please. Any, any years up in here? Any years up in here? Anyone? Give it to them, give it to them, let's see what we're working with. Let's see the figure. It's a transparent government, many people here in the house see the figure of that place. So far, so that we can see if we are beating Sydney, Brisbane, Melbourne, Adelaide, even not at the tree. If we are beating the hazard. Oka Makou? Are they outside? Make a call.
I'll hold this. Hold this one second.
I don't see the sheep are counted, but eh... You want, you take a plate out, but I want to do this one. Okay. Now collect us from this money. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, can you put it into together for us? Let's see what we're working with. Uh-huh, you call me. You just say you not call me. Okay, okay, I just say you call me, sir. What are we working with? Give me figure, what are we working with?
Yeah, we need to focus.
Quick, 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 we need to round up so that eh, we move on. Let's see what we're working with. If Pet, if we beat Sydney, because they think we could not do it. They say Pet, no, they not get action. Just one second, we just putting our figures together. And then we see what, what we left with.
It's seven, twenty-two viewers now, it's a hundred and fifty.
Alright, thank you so much, everyone, we still waiting for, it's like election, we are waiting for results. In the meantime, while we are waiting for the figures to come out and see what we raised today, and see what we eh, what we left with. Eh, we are gonna be having lunch, I mean, not lunch, late lunch. People don't want to listen to, hear the question he's asking me. If you show what I don't, don't listen to people eh. Sure what I know you are president to be. Your followers, the way they do things sometimes, you don't need to hear. If you hear the question he's asking me, you will not ask me to take you back to your hotel again. Okay, I'm ready, I'm coming back to you, sir. Okay, what we figure are we working with? Alright, ladies and gentlemen, we eh, we have raised six thousand one hundred eighty dollars. Right now, six thousand one hundred eighty dollars. What is left of ten K? Three, three what? Three thousand eight hundred twenty. Hmm, you're not too far. You suppose more than that. Yes. Alright. The real figure, that has been contributed. Alright, all my tax people, can I just eh, make connection with this boy again? And raise broad mind. I think these figures eh,
It may go on help.
It should be more than that.
We need to keep an eye on it.
It should be more than that, people said it should be more than that. Unless we are miss, we are missing some people. It should be more than that. Yeah, we've got accountant working on the matter. Uh-huh, we are coming. Eh, now I want to ask you, ask you, answer your question. So already listen to... Eh, they still working with the figures eh, my accountant is there and I can see everybody putting hands together. Okay, what was your question, Ibisah?
The, the question is for you, not for the audience, and I don't ask you. You know.
How do you get the question? Transparency government, ask you.
The question are for you, not for the audience.
Ask question, not the one that come over here now, you come say I forget, ask you question oh. I give you the last chance to ask me the question oh, my dog, ask me.
I don't ask you now.
They say how much we save we donate. Oh my, Nigeria on the hasho. What's the figure? Okay. That is looking very good, put your hands together, everyone. I believe in my eh, my team, we have just raised several thousand four hundred thirty dollars, right? Seven thousand four hundred thirty dollars. Put your hands together, Pet people! You eh, you know, if something is more than awesome, you call it wholesome. You are all wholesome. I cannot thank you enough. In fact, my prophet, thank you for your job well done. The team verse you, now you parrot, now you get off. No, the way you say, perhaps you are not doing your job very well, you are too, I can see, you too mild, this boy need chili, hot chili. Thank you very much, my honor, I would not mind with president to be. Don't worry, you get the hotel, you connect. Transparency. They said, come on, where would the today stakeholders, now not there, there oh. Stakeholders, action! You defeat me. Alright. See doctors, they make a balance in the many one. Boisistah. Boi ri di ji ri ja oh. The economy, they, they, if he deal my one shit, you go there, you know what they are doing. The economy move eh, this way, I tell my brother. That one, my daughter, they pressed twenty, twenty dollar. Now me and I was a car today. I would say, my daughter, you don't you, you don't you look at my eye, when I blink you, you blink back. When we're growing up, our parents will look at you, don't eat, your mama will tell you, don't eat, look at my eye. And your mama, now they fed test the food. He said, he ugly oh, he was, he don't look my eye. I took my daughter eye the other day. Somebody offer food, my daughter was looking. I'm blinking. It's where I. Next thing, started eating, when we go to the car, say, he said daddy, what, something fell inside your eye, why were, why were you blinking your eye? She the only the both of our brother. Now, now worry. We are down with that one, two thousand. We got seven thousand four hundred thirty, so how much are we down with? Two thousand what? Five seventy. That's not too bad. That is not bad. I'm a raise that money from four people right now, in the house. Just four people before we have refreshment, four people volunteer to raise that money for me, please. We want to beat Sydney record, please. We want to beat Brisbane record. They think we cannot do it, that was when somebody posted on my wall, my guy forget how you to raise that kind money. For Pet. How? But we want to tell them, we can do it. I need four people, please. I'm not a pastor. If I was a pastor, I would say, your brother goes on the way. That's what they tell the carrier, it's come out oh. They also even say, you say you get only eleven, you come out. I'm not a pastor, but I'm standing in front of you, please, I'm begging you. Raise that money for us, I need four people to stand up and balance that money for us, please. I need four more people, yes, one, stand up for me, please, my brother. Put your hands together, put your hands together for this man. What are you giving us?
Just a token, just a sum of two hundred dollars.
Two hundred dollars, thank you, what's the name, sir? Demola, Ademola, Gary Scotta. Two hundred dollars, so, we are going now, please, I need three, in fact, let me bump it up again, another four. I still need three, three, four people, you can do it, please. Come on, guys, do it for us, do it for this movement, please. We need to have refreshment, our ladies need to dance for us, they need to work, come, sure worry.
Thank you. Eh, we African. I came later, to make it up. As African man. I'm sorry for that. I want to hear Shorun's voice. Eh, that's why I'm here. Eh, another place I'm there, I will give to all the girls. But I still want to hear him this, right? And what is up? That's why I'm here.
What's your name, sir?
I am Bitcher Hilari here, I don't need to speak to the English, I'm an Igbo man. Thank you very much.
Uche? Uche Hilaris? Oye Buka? Igbo Igbo, I get correct name. Bring them up, come, come me to Hilaris, two hundred dollars. You hear Shorun's voice, boy, Igbo, they ignore this is now, you there, you there Facebook? You can all hear a voice from Facebook now. You are Igbo man, you are catching the money, they look big man. You, you answer more question, two hundred dollars, please. I should call it, oye Buka, there's a no five to do.
Brother, I made it to pay five. Eh, but at same time, I know there's no five already, in the table. I, I should start it. I will pay five twenty dollars, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Vala, from Valola. That's science where you read, where you tell us yesterday. It's working. Science of catching some people. Is what I calling, put twenty dollars to the cost, please. What are we looking at, how much is left, give me, give me, give me, give me. We need to do it before we have refreshment and the ladies want to dance. Oh my god, look at that, we only need one thousand fifty dollar left. Philani. Hundred dollars from Philani, please. Hundred dollar from Philani, who is? Oh, yes, Mr. Rio, my friend.
On behalf of me and my brother, two hundred.
Oh! His stage name is Mr. Rio, he, I guess the data. This man is a potential young, talented businessman, he will soon what they have on, two hundred dollars, gonna recognize him. Two hundred dollars from Mr. Rio. Who are, we are not far from it, meeting our target, minimum, we are not far from it. How much have we got left, Mr. Makou? How much have we got left? We're not far from it, please. Okay, eh, Oka, no, my dad eh, my dad say my husband has done his part. My dad do your own selfie. Eh, he don't do eh, eh, he don't do, but I know, I like. We don't want make a body as Oka say, wait till they happen now. Eh, we live on that, Oka not try. How, how much are we down with, please, what's left? We need seven hundred fifty, oh my lord, we are not far from it. Seven hundred fifty dollars. Where you, Oka? You not come today. You did high table. You did high table. I beg, go sit down for where he's dancing. I beg, I beg, I, I call you back oh. Come, come me, I see you, not be the one, you take my back, say, I didn't see, I didn't, I beg, where you, Oka? I said, he should call here yesterday, he say he go walk, he say you come. Eh eh! Lawyer, doctor, wait till the man, doctor, I beg. Eh, on behalf of, I did eh, I can be adding you. I still remember that. Addesina! Please, I will make the announcement on behalf of you now. I am capable of making the announcement, if you don't want make, if, on behalf of Addesina family, they have raised, donated two hundred fifty dollars for us, please. Because if you, if she didn't do, do that, I know what to do to the husband. He tell you what he do for his Amayas, no? This my, the husband was in the Mayas, he was size the shoe. I reached there, I said, wait no, sir. My doctor, you don't hear, the shoe so wet that he had. He not answer me, I said, what I will do this guy? I said, doc, na mi oh. He be, he don't saw this doctor, say, no, no, no blame on now. On that took walk. So, when I come and go back, so the team, I think the team, what you na leave for office? I said, doctor, I did here, for me eh, no, I don't, I don't carry one. Because he removed the main shoe that I wore, that he brought, he was size it new one, so I just collected the, the old one, I took it and walk away. His Amayas, so I hid behind one pillar with one Asian woman, I said, please don't tell him. The worst part of it, he did, in fact, he, he didn't want that shoe, now he wanted the old shoe, old shoe, not today eh. Come and see my doctor now, for his Amayas. As, in fact, I told Mr. Addesina to something else, his Amayas. I was hardly looking at him. He was looking for his first, but they had to call, somebody had to go to the bathroom and see if they mistakenly pack it away to the store room. Now only somebody called him, he say, oh my brother, camera, they look you oh. Better free this man oh. I spoke, I saw that, he, he don't say this law, yeah, he been at, the law will come back for you. This man will deny me, because Peter denied Jesus Christ. Three times, I said, I call me, I say, doctor, see your shoe. He don't look at me from head to toe. Is that, God, what I will do with this boy? You understand? So, I'm very glad we did that, two fifty. Who is, how much have we got left now? Five hundred. Okay, who else is calling us here? Wait you na sit in my body now eh. Madam? Oh! You feel I say you will call, give this job for me eh. The way I see my guy and this team madam eh, their attention eh. Oh, but get ready, person, they carry man, they go. You don't see we are this oh. I don't want person to slap in my mouth with the answer, I'm opening. Who slap my son in Australia? Eh, he go feed the pig for me. No, they will not do that to me, mommy. Eh, mommy say we have it there, she's gonna do, and the same time, he promise us that. No problem, we still down five hundred dollars, does that mean we conclude the five hundred dollars you have done eh? So, came close, that fine. Eh, both women, not the five five oh, okay, we are down with her many. Eh, help us? Eh, no, they say we never compete, we never in this room. Uh-huh, eh, won't compete now. Alright, instead of going on and on and on, let's have the GoFundMe address, I need the more I got, you need something, we can close the contribution. Okay. Oka? Five hundred eh. What is name now? Uh-huh, you know they say, what is it, you say what they have on your back? Okay. Eh, alright. Guys, make some noise! I want to use supporting to just say, I can't go on my knees. A A C? A A C? When I when they say action. A A C? Take it back! A A C? Take it back! Who say we don't know too much? The father. God punish devil. Somebody say you raise hand, it will be ten thousand five hundred dollars. Okay, Chi? I say you raise hand oh. How do you cook back for us? You try. Alright, now the ladies, ladies wanna dance, look, eh, please, now that we have pledged, we have a timeframe to redeem this pledge, please. If you can, please, be able to redeem this pledge, it's for us by tonight or fairly tomorrow afternoon. Is that alright? For people to, is that okay? Alright. Shorun, normally wherever, wherever he goes, he is a man of his word, he's very transparent. He never fails to tell the rest of the world, his fans, where he has been and what he done for him, you know what I mean? So, we are very, very happy to see somebody like this. Please, before tomorrow, he is gonna be leaving on Tuesday, right? On Tuesday, he leaves. He wants to be able to, be able to thank the rest of the world for this, okay? And because he can see, appear in the account and make, you know, sum up his eh, his equation. Please, endeavor to, please, make this pledges redeemable by latest tomorrow afternoon. And as you do this for us, for this movement, you know you have done something for yourself, for your future, for the future of your kids. And for those loved ones, you live back home. Those people who are still in the struggles, this is our country, we must reclaim it back, and it's a struggle for us. May God continue to bless you abundantly. God continue to replenish your pocket. And I'm gonna be letting eh, Shorun do the last, by end of the program. I will now have to call on the ladies, are they ready? The ladies, one or ten, Shorun, I don't know if you got this one when you went to Sydney. You see, we are small but mighty oh. They say we far from the rest of the world, my brother, we do amazing things here. I don't think wherever you went, they dance for you, whatever, we got beautiful women in the house to entertain you, to show you appreciation and the love. Put your hands together as we welcome the women, are they ready? Okay. Are you guys ready? Okay, they ready, put your hands together, get entertained. This is about four reasons, and about doing all whatever Shorun will. Shorun wants to do for us, but it's also about entertainment. We're here to be entertained. Alright, I pass on the microphone to Oga Shin, she's ready. Alright. They are ready. And once we get entertained, then we have a refreshment, and the last phase of the questioning, and we're done. Nasso! Nasso! For the shake up. All the take you back, we made the house. I see. Nasso! Taki di baba. Eh, we can think that taki di baba. Nasso! That's it. Please, refreshment time. Don't go away, please. We have refreshment after the dance. And we finish up with the last, the round of it. So, start! Alright, alright. Alright, alright. Thank you very much. Thank you very, very much, women, thank you, thank you ladies. We appreciate that. Now we, put your hands together for the ladies. Eh, Aginos? 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 Aginos, say, a family don't drop the salary. I think one of the eh, yes. Alright, alright, we are on the competing phase. How many of us have got the cards for question? How many of us have got the cards for question, can we reassemble ourselves and sit down now? And we start again with questioning. Can we sit down and finish up with the last set of questioning? Alright, shall we sit down and finish off? And one more thing, can we all sit down now, please? All the ladies inside, can you, outside, can you come inside, please? We want to finish off with the last round of questioning, please. Can we take our seat? Hilaris will now here, officially here, Shorun's voice now. Give me a card, the queens want to ask question, alright. We make sure we provide card for the kids. Alright, we're not gonna keep it too long. Come on, sit down now, take your position back. Thank you for the donation. Eh, take him back. Alright, please, you know, the account is still there, it doesn't mean that when you finish one separate, that's it. It's an ongoing thing, please, you know, Shorun is still on this race. It's an ongoing thing, so you got the account, put in something there, your name will be there, so there's permission for that. Who's got card number nine? Card number nine, Tosin, right? You okay? Oh. Oh. Now this is second round. That's the second round.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tosin Oney. And you actually started on a good note, because I can remember during your introductory speech, you were mentioning Australia being the end of the world, and my very intelligent wife actually said, no, the beginning of the world, and I'm glad we collected that. Eh, I got through a party in Mr. Asho here, about nine years ago, because I consider myself a student of politics, so to say. And eh, I was falling up on the health of eh, the dead president Maru Sadaadwa. Other news I've read couldn't give information about his health statement. It was shrouded in secrecy then, but you were turning out information about him. And I can remember reading in eh, the dead eh, special presser to inform eh, eh, his spokesman eh, Oluseku Adenini, that even information that is not guessed, he was getting on Sahara before that. And that they were kind of like shielding the way from information, and they were still getting information. So, like, that's what's part of your struggles, getting it, so, and we deeply appreciate you for that, and for your college. Eh, like, the, I'd give so much of the eh, issue of restructuring, and true restructuring start from leadership restructuring. So, the same set of arms that have been holding us now, we want them out. But, you are, especially being your uncle sir, I believe you will stand very well, that eh, eh, you are coming up against political edgemen. And these are not guys that not, that just eh, give power or surrender power easily. So eh, my question is that, how do you plan to take them on, once? And if by chance, anyway, because in fact, that would give a great upset if we're able to handle that. Because a lot of, I'm actually begging, I need some time. A lot of eh, eh, effort have been made, you know, probably the greatest one before you had been was that of eh, the late Ghaniparwani. And eh, a lot of them just came out. Hope rises, and before you know it, everything gives out. So what are your plans to sustain? Because, and that's the example I saw in Sahara before that, and I'm very impressed with the way Sahara, before that, have been, you know, rolling. It's also, it didn't turn to Shorun's campaign too, no, it kept on advancing. So, you do something bigger than yourself. So, do you plan to make this thing back, make something that's bigger than yourself? You know, that even if Tivore is an accretive war, even if you are unable to shatter the eh, glass city, so to say, definitely you represent a force that will give it the greatest crack. So, how do you intend to, you know, take on this eh, political, eh, tyranny and, it's other well-intended leaders that are also running to make a difference in India, thank you, I can't thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, eh, number ten, thank you.
I don't know, I believe in Mr. Shorun. My name is Ibrahim. And eh, my question, I just have three questions. The first one is eh, how do you decide to, for this first day? What makes you to decide on becoming the president of Nigeria? And the second thing, it has to do with what my brother said earlier eh. I would be frank eh, as we all know eh, PDP, ATC, they are very strong in Nigeria. And it should not be easy for you to just go in there, or for us to just go in there now. Let's assume, it doesn't work, as eh, God says, this is not the time, it's not time yet. What is the plan going forward? Will this be just one shot or no? Are we going to have something referent? Because yeah, I, I would, I would not like to just come in and support something that will just rise up my hope and just die now. So, and the third one, the last question one of my brother asked, how will you eh, support yourself with people of the same idea? Because you are here to try, to touch it. We believe in Boi, that Boi will do the right thing, but, well, let's say he has a very good intention, but, the people that surrounded him are not good. What's your plan on getting that done? Thank you.
Number one, please.
What exactly, and my friend was going to also check with that What exactly are you going to do about making sure? If we're contributing on the thousand, hundred billion to the economy And we can't do, I don't know what we're to do this, but not supposed to do that We can't do anything about it, we're just speaking English How are you going to go about this? Now, people are saying, "Oh, Soworé" And I think this is the time to actually do this, and I agree with you totally If the two options we have is to die in president And maybe you are an American, I still don't understand why America would not Put Atiku in prison or challenge him or Like they do, hijack him with what they've said they've done If you know, can you please explain to us? I think this is the time to do it And how do you exactly want to take on this establishment? Thanks
Number two, please Five questions Five
Hi, my name is Timmy I'm also from Odo State Well, my question goes dark I studied economics and, uh... Really, whatever you want to do as a politician or whatever You must know all about economics very well That means your economy too must be well, must be sound In order to perform well Now my question is What are those things, what are those economic policy You want to execute when you get to power? You understand various economic policy? What economic policy are you intending carrying out when you get there? And the second question is this When you started, uh... Your speech here I went, uh... Online And one of my friend comments and says, "Back home" He said, "Oh, we love him" In fact, we want him to be the president But to be candid, he can't get there And I asked him instantly, "Why did you say he can't get there?" He said, "The political environment will not allow him get there" Now, the question is How did you want to face that challenge when you get back home? Because it is very easy, you come in here and telling us you want to do this, you want to do this Back home, ninety percent of us is not going to vote for you to be candidate You have to make sure that you put your house in place when you get back home And that is the main place where your main political stock should be centered on That is from my home side, thank you
Number three, please
I greet everybody here Um... My whole question will not be too much But I want the president to be to actually lay more emphasis on it Uh... Initially, I would like to appreciate Mr. Soworé for his, uh... Movement Because now, all Nigerians now, we are, we la- realize that You don't need to have like a twenty years experience or fifty years experience To be a Nigeria president Which Mr. Soworé has laid a good foundation But my question is, what is your economic plans to move Nigeria forward? I mean, the minister Because as you are here today, I expect you to come properly Someone who will present to us as, "This is the Minister of Information" "This is the Minister of Health" Is it going to be Dr. Damage that is going to be the Minister of Health? Or the other lady who is going to be the Information Minister? And that's number one On the issue of security Without Nigeria being a secure country, there is no achievement Because whatsoever you build can be destroyed within a high plane That's another question Uh... The last question is, uh... This is a race Is either you win or you lose What about if you lose this election in 2019? Is this going to be the end of this, your plan? Thank you
Number four
Good day, my president Uh... My, my question has been, I have two questions One of them has been partly answered, um... About the grassroots in the north We have a country that has about Not less than sixty percent of the votes coming from the north And then let us assume that we are in the north now, that sixty percent is coming from The sixty percent of the votes are not coming from the cities or the capitals They are not coming from Tutsi, they are not coming from Kano City, they are not coming from Katina City They are coming from the itinerant That settlement sixty kilometers from the closest major road I was a presiding officer, that was my experience In the north, in Yobe State Sixty kilometers on the sand, desert Yet, if you see the mass number of people coming to vote There are more than the Lagos ward on my street How? Apart from radio and all of that, considering the fact that these guys, I call them zombie votes The bulama, the village head, just tells them, "This is who we are voting" Zubah or Zubé or whatever, they take thumbprint on this particular thing And that is exactly what they are going to do This is where the votes comes from What is my president's strategy? To do, undo? That's this very pedestrian of a practice that operates in the north And then my second question is this, my questions are electoral Because my president, I want him to be there So the second question is this When the election starts What is my president's strategy? To prepare paraventio? Paraventio we did not imagine as forced in the election God forbid When we go to tribunal How do we gather the evidences during the election? How do we, who are our representatives in the wards? In the polling units? What is our instruction to them to gather the evidence that we use to go to tribunal for our victory? If we are not advanced as winner at first, thanks, thank you, my president
Thank you And we will follow, uh... Number five, five
Hello, good evening, my name is Nysana Child And I, um... I'm just wondering, first of all With regards to, um... To political framework we're speaking A lot of the countries in the western hemisphere are really into securing the borders and maintaining national sovereignty So I would like to know what are your policy positions in regards to maintaining Nigeria's national sovereignty? First of all, establishing one, and then maintaining one, in terms of immigration So I want to know what are your immigration policies are required? To A, attract foreign, um... Foreign, uh... Foreigners and foreign investment, foreign money And also, not circumvent local, uh... Businesses as well And also, uh... My other question is with regards to China And how they are so much into investing Africa at the moment What are your plan, your policy in place, you know, that that whole system is regu- regulated? And at least, open to transparency? With regards to the, um... International, um... International, uh... International relationships with SQUAD, UK, other countries as well A lot of our image internationally has been damaged by the whole foreign line Uh... For, uh... People So I want to know what you're going to do in terms of your policy positions To strengthening and recreating Nigeria's international image So that, you know, we could probably get visa-free access to a lot of countries that at the moment We're not able to get access to, thank you
Thank you, and we leave, uh... President to be to answer all those questions lined up for him, thank you
Thank you, uh... First question was, uh... And particularly, the question was about how we intend to take on the hegemon Within our political system And I would say That, uh... There is nothing new about the hegemon To report to you that I have never done before I typically will let you have my background already We used to have military dictators in Nigeria as our major problems There was, uh... Papangida, there was Abacha Uh... Then eventually Abisalam And they were probably more powerful than the civilians that we're dealing with now In fact, in my days at the University of Lagos We went to class with Amotan, wanted at the university throughout by university education Uh... But we fought these hegemon Or the demons that were against democracy And we defeated them It took a while, but we did defeat them and delivered onto Nigeria A democratic era that we are all enjoying and talking about today So, there's no, there's no big deal about these hegemon When the people of Nigeria are tired of them, they will rise up and wipe them out And that is where we are now, in my view I think a lot of Nigerians have reached a point where They are no longer accepting the nonsense that is going on Posted on us by the hegemon you mentioned And we will defeat them this time around again There's a lot of question about how do you intend to sustain the movement? And I would also tell you that This happened to be Another level of my activities engagements in Nigeria And I've never stopped I have just escalated from time to time Uh... Working with other people, how to fight the system So there was a time, how do we fight the military? It was through the student movement, National Attention of Nigerian Students And Pay for Democracy, uh... Committee for Defense of Human Rights The Ghana Power of Peace, Wole Stuyinka, uh... Temi Falan We all sat together, fought, went to Some of us went to prison several times Uh... I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't say prison, but I was detained a lot of times About eight different times, expelled from the university twice But, we sustained the struggle After the civilians came to power And I was not in the country I started another thing which was to create a media platform That disrupted the Nigerian media space And twelve years later Sahara Reporters became a dominant force Not only in Nigeria as a media outlet, but also on the continent of Africa As a matter of fact, on the world stage We were competing with the likes of CNN, BBC, and Gazira Competing on matters that were related to happenings in Nigeria Uh... So, at this time, I decided that Media is doing very well, but media is not enough to save Nigeria So I write all the stories I want about corruption I eventually discovered that corrupt people in Nigeria Start to even adapt To the way they're turning out stories against them They became unconcerned and, because there were no consequences Uh... I don't know how many times I've broken stories, I cannot tell you how many investigative reports I've done There is no politician in Nigeria today of note That I do not have a report, I haven't done a report on how they stole money Or how they forged certificates Or what kinds of criminal things, but at the point, they don't want to worry about you anymore The only thing that bothered them, I'll tell you Is their children that are schooling abroad They'll call me and say, "See, I don't care about what you're writing, but" My children's, uh... Classmate that calling me thief The blood of my children And I say, "Oh, guy, you're not a thief" So even the money you used to send your child to school abroad It's stolen money, so let your child also bear the brunt of your wickedness But over time, I discovered that the only way to take Nigeria back and to fix the country Is for good people Nigerians To step in the ring and rescue and take the country from the political class Can you imagine? That Nigeria got to a point where the Senate President of Nigeria is somebody who's supposed to be in prison They had bankrupted a bank, and bankrupted the state Society, General Bank, and far as to that, the Sahara King But he became the Senate President of Nigeria Because why? Good people were not running for office And when good people don't run for office, bad people will run for office And win elections So that's what made me to make up my mind And in sustaining this, there's no question about it That's why we moved to a movement first, and then both the political parties Our party is less than two most old ALC, the African Action Congress It's one of the most popular political parties in Nigeria today as a spirit Competing favorably with the PDP That's been around for nineteen years, and APC that's been around for four years Completely giving them a run for their money And we don't have money But we've got ideas, because ideas is going to become the new currency of engagement politically In Nigeria So would we sustain this? Definitely Whether we win or not But I'm telling you, this election This election that is coming to us Is the easiest election to win Against the old guards in Nigeria Because a lot of Nigerians have come to the final boss top And they are saying enough is enough And I imagine That we will defeat them, and we defeat them randomly People are worried about what happened in Oshu State and Ekiti State, and are using that to judge But as the journalism has covered politics a lot I tell you that whoever wins in Ekiti will lose the national election It happened in 2014 And I'll tell you, it happened in 2015 again But what I don't want us to do Is to lose the election from a lifeless person with an umbrella That would be the tragedy that Nigerian cannot afford So those who are saying that they are getting articulated We must ensure that we deactivate all the articulated people So that Nigeria can make progress Nigeria can experience progress, peace, and prosperity Atiku will not make it happen I have told people Atiku's history Apart from collecting bribes They were the ones that destroyed the official sector on Basonge When universities were going on strike, a lot of people were in university in, in, in 2003 to 2007 There, there was a long strike These guys allowed it to strike the first time Why? They wanted to get license for themselves to create private universities On Basonge went ahead and created Bell University Atiku went and created, uh... ABTU, whatever So, these are the kinds of characters you have already functioned So people have even considered that Atiku is a chef who that the cannon generator So you can imagine, I can confirm this Someone who is investing in generators You expect the person to give you electricity? You are wasting your time Uh... Someone has a question about participating in the election This DAS Proa vote I would guarantee you that as soon as We're elected and sworn in It will be one of my priorities in Nigeria It will be the first thing we can do for Nigeria and Nigerians To allow Nigerians to the DAS Proa to vote Part of it is selfish If Nigerians in DAS Proa were to be voting in this election, I would not be campaigning anymore I would have won the ele- we would have won the election in advance Because that would be six million or more votes in the bag, right there The reason is that most likely, all the DAS Proas would vote for a candidate they can trust Secondly, you cannot bribe them with gari or rice Or branded t-shirt or akara You are wasting your time Thirdly They will be able to vote and count their vote Because it will be counted, it will be done in a place where I like cannot influence the outcome of the vote They will count it, they'll take a picture of it They will throw it in the room So look, I have even established that Attiku is a chef who does the cardio generator. So you can imagine, I can confirm this, someone who is invested in generators, you expect the person to give you electricity. You are wasting your time. Someone asks a question about participating in the election, this diaspora vote. I will guarantee you that as soon as we're elected and sworn in, it will be one of my priorities in Nigeria, it will be the best thing we can do for Nigeria and Nigerians to allow Nigeria to be diaspora to vote. Part of it is selfish. If Nigerians in diaspora were to be voting in this election, I would not be campaigning anymore. I would have won the ele, we would have won the election in advance. Because that would be six million of more votes in the bar, right there. The reason is that most likely, all the diasporas will vote for a candidate they can trust. Secondly, you cannot bribe them with gary or rice or branded t-shirt or akara. You are wasting your time. Thirdly, they will be able to vote and count their vote, because it will be counted, it will be done in a place where INEC cannot influence the outcome of the vote. They will count it, they'll take a picture of it, they will upload it even before INEC can use the venue of the, of the election. So it will be most transparent, and I think it's a legacy we must give to Nigeria, I mean Nigeria, that Nigerians outside of Nigeria, who are really fully investors, are allowed to vote and their votes are counted even first before the people at home, uh, will vote. I feel terrible that you guys cannot vote, but I can tell you, you can vote with your telephone this time around. Most of you don't know, people at home do respect us a lot. Even when they don't always like us in respect, in respect that we use, because we know that we've seen how things are working all over the world, and we can't get it wrong in terms of our prescriptions for, uh, making Nigeria a better place. So all people at home, and make sure that they vote for your candidates. Like I said, if necessary, apply some sanctions until you do what is right. Because if Nigeria becomes a fantastic country today, you two will spend less on helping people at home. You will not have to worry and feel guilty about every relative you have at home. Because that's what kills me, is that I have to be feeling guilty even when I don't have money to give. I'm feeling bad in those problems, I mean regarding people at home, because it's, it's a lot of pressure to support our family backward. But guess what? You are the ones supporting, you are the social security department of Nigeria. You are the ones funding weddings, marrials, you know, education, endorsements. Some of you are the ones supplying water to your villages through borrow, construction. You are the ones running some of your former schools through, I, I had to hire three teachers for my former secondary school as of two weeks ago. You know, in those states, and Odo State is supposed to be one of the most educationally advanced states in Nigeria. They are not paid just to teach students, they don't care anymore. So are you doing this a lot for the country? You should be able to have a say in the country and who commands the country. Uh, there's a question about economic plan for Nigeria. I have spoken about this several times. You see, you cannot have an economy first and foremost if you don't have supply of electricity. You are wasting your time. Because if you don't have supply of electricity, you cannot be in the production game. Like somebody said, I think it was in Sydney yesterday, that, or was it here? That do you use head cars or some of these cars we need to use, the technology that we need? We need electricity to activate our computers. In Nigeria, there were places we went to and our phones died completely. We have power banks, but after a while, the power banks are out of energy, then you don't have electricity. For three days, we were stuck. It's as if you are dropped in an island where there's no electricity, that's how Nigeria is sometimes. So our economy was driven by power, was driven by the ability to produce, and production will also bring about jobs. And when you have jobs, you kickstart a real economy. Nigerian economy as it is today is an economy that is designed for outsiders. Only outsiders come and leave money and leave Nigeria with money. To be honest with you, I hate to have economic conversation about Nigeria, Nigeria doesn't have any economy. The economy we have in the place is a trapped, error economy, you know, or what I call a rub buck or rub my back and rub your back economy. And that's why you can never get, you can never get correct or accurate economic figures from Nigerian officials. I think they were sending a video online where they asked the Minister of Planning to explain how much Nigeria is owing, they might not say enough. And you can't blame him, truth is, he doesn't know. They don't have the details, they are not putting their act together. But what is to change, one only, so that they can take something more, is the political economy of Nigeria is more for the restructure, to work for Nigerian person to be focused on empowering Nigeria and Nigerians. And that is what we set out to do immediately. The strategy to get the grassroots in the north, again, I've mentioned it, you're right to say that in the north, they rely on somebody to tell them who to vote for. But we are also seeing that northernans are not as bankrupt as we think. In fact, to be honest with you, what I saw in the north, northernans are the most politically conscious people in Nigeria. There is hardly a northern that doesn't have a PBC. Most southernans, especially the educated southernans, they are only puffing and puffing on Twitter and Facebook, they don't have PBC. In Lekki, Victoria Annalikoye, we did a research, over two million people in that place, they don't vote. And then at the end of the election, they are complaining that it's Tinuku who chose their government for them. When you don't vote, what do you expect? And Tinuku doesn't campaign to people in Lekki and Ojia, he goes to Alagbaadu, Abimocho, Musin. After they win the election, they come back to there and, and the people, they start to think and play together with the Koye people. Because they know they don't vote. So if you don't go out to vote, you cannot determine who is going to be your leader. Uh, so the north, the best strategy for the north, as I have told you, is to understand what the north is today. You know, capitalize on the discontent in the north and also look into programs that will make an average natural to feel that they can get out of that poverty. When we worked in the north to campaign, we were surprised that those northern women were asking for schools. They kept asking us for Makaranta, Brudisimio, schools, Houser. They understand that if we send their children to school, their children will bring them out of poverty. Right? So, and we were well received in the north. But as I said earlier, the north of the past, where everybody in the north goes in the same direction, don't exist anymore in Nigeria today. Just take that to the fact. Uh, there's a question here about how do we intend to prepare for election loss in terms of gathering evidence to vote in tribunal? What I can guarantee is that we have enough people on the ground who will digitally monitor the election, collect information, and be able to provide authentic results, which will match with whatever INEC, uh, is going to produce. Those of you who follow Sahar Reporters in two thousand and fifteen, you know for the first time in the history of Nigeria, we are the first to provide the results of that election that was for Harry to office. Before INEC could announce the results, we had already produced results from ten states, authentically and organically obtained by us through several means. It was because of that the PDP couldn't win the election. And then they had it mapped down with Ruben B, the next year, saying that we won't take this anymore. Remember that, uh, uh, episode where he went to INEC? So we know how to collect information and evidence, definitely. Uh, but I don't anticipate that we will lose this election. I'm sorry, I don't know how to not feel confident that we will win this election. Our lady there asked about border security and what our immigration policy will be to attract outsiders. Well, we have something that's bigger than what naturally people would think of immigration policy. We have a policy that is outlined, that anybody who can trace their origin back to Nigeria from the diaspora, not Nigerians who left Nigeria now, but even blacks, if you do your DNA and it shows that you are sixty percent in Nigeria, it will make Nigeria a destination to you visa-free. Such that you can come back to Nigeria, invest in Nigeria, feel like at home in Nigeria. And that is the first way to start our immigration policy. The other immigration, I mean, foreign, immigration policy of